We had a wonderful, number one, first-time annual hometown festival. It was just awesome. And we had a great taste of Prescott. I know I checked in, I checked in folks when they came in. We sold 650 tickets online, another 100 people coming up. We sold out in the first probably 30 minutes. And then we sold a few more, 50 down when we had some space. So congratulations to Skylar Reeves and Vanessa Evans and the Prescott Downtown Partnership. Really good job. It was really awesome.
Yep, that's a good point. It was a lot of fun. Thank you for that. All right, we have an invocation today by Deacon Tony Humphrey with Sacred Heart Catholic Church and the pledge led by Councilman Sishka.
Hey, reading from the Holy Gospel according to Matthew, Jesus said, "Again I say to you that if two of you agree on earth about anything that they may ask, it shall be done for them by my Father who is in heaven." Let us pray. God of justice and mercy, thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our city. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with charity and restraint. Give us a spirit of service. Remind us that we are stewards of your authority. Guide us to be the leaders of your people need, that your people need. Help us to see the humanity and the dignity of those who disagree with us and to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence your creation deserves. And finally, Father, renew us with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of the human person. We ask this as your sons and daughters, confident in your goodness and love. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Deacon Humphrey. This please call roll.
Mayor Mangarelli.
President.
Mayor Pro Tem Orr.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Here.
Councilman Good.
Here.
Councilwoman Lamerson.
Here.
Councilwoman Scholl is excused. Councilman Sishka.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Let's move on to proclamation six A.
Charitable Giving Awareness Month, November 2019.
Do I have some folks that would like to join us? Nancy, how are you?
How are you?
Nancy and I work together on Big Brothers, Big Sisters, so we know how important this charitable giving is, right? Charitable Giving Awareness Month, whereas the state of Arizona, a tax, the state of Arizona tax credit program enables taxpayers to contribute $400 for a single taxpayer and $800 for taxpayers filing a joint return and receive a dollar-for-dollar tax credit on their Arizona tax bill. It's enormous. It's wonderful. Whereas the full amount can be given to a qualified charitable organization of their choice or a school of their choice, the taxpayer can use their tax dollars to express their beliefs and values by supporting a charity that does the work that they hold dear. Whereas taxpayers urge to adopt the option to allow employees to contribute to a qualifying charitable organization from state withholding, thereby not reducing take on pay. And whereas by donating to a qualified charitable organization and a school, taxpayers are in effect given the opportunity to choose how portion of their tax dollars are used. And whereas taxpayers no longer need to itemize in order to participate in the Arizona tax credit program, a donation that qualifies for a state tax credit is also fully deductible on a federal tax return, reducing the federal tax liability. Whereas the Arizona tax credit program is a way of keeping our tax money in the community, keeping our tax dollars local through the charitable giving tax credit. It builds a stronger and a better community at no cost to donors. Therefore, Mayor Greg Mangarelli, Mayor of the City of Prescott of Arizona, in partnership with Yavapai Big Brothers, Big Sisters, does hereby proclaim November 2019 as Charitable Giving Awareness Month. Thank you, Nancy. What'd you like to say?
Just a short thing that I want on behalf of the boys and girls that we serve throughout Yavapai County. I want to thank every one of you in this room for your support. Keep your tax dollars local. Let's don't support fixing potholes down in Scottsdale. Let's take care of the qualifying nonprofits in your community and keep our dollars local for the kids and for the, everyone that needs our help. And thank you so much.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for that. Item six B, please.
Patient Blood Management Week, November 4th through the 8th, 2019.
Hello, how are you? Ladies and gentlemen, it's my pleasure to do this proclamation, not only because I'm a member of Prescott City Council, but also I'm a member of the Yavapai Regional Medical Center Board of Trustees. So this is particularly pleasing for me. The proclamation is for Patient Blood Management Awareness Week. Whereas the city of Prescott is pleased to join Yavapai Regional Medical Center located in our city as it celebrates Patient Blood Management Awareness Week, November 4th through 8th, 2019. And whereas Yavapai Regional Medical Center is staffed by professionals with a commitment to improving patient outcomes through optimal blood management. And whereas patient blood management is the appropriate provision and use of blood, its components and derivatives and strategies to reduce or avoid the need for a blood transfusion. And whereas Patient Blood Management Awareness Week speaks to the concerns of every person to have the best health care available to them, respecting individual preferences and beliefs, and continuing education of health care professionals to provide that care. Whereas Yavapai Regional Medical Center is staffed by professionals with a commitment to improving patient outcomes and educating the medical community about the best practices in blood management. And whereas we commend the members of Yavapai Regional Medical Center for extending themselves in service to others according to their commitment of improving patient outcomes. Now therefore Greg Mangarelli, Mayor of the City of Prescott, does hereby proclaim November 4th through 8th, 2019 as Patient Blood Management Awareness Week.
Please say a few words.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We truly appreciate this. That proclamation says so much, maybe a lot, and you're wondering what is this all about? This is the seventh annual year that we've had this proclamation and that we've observed patient blood management along with the international organization, the Society for the Advancement of Blood Management. So it's real simple to think of. It's about keeping your blood in you and keeping it healthy. And this is outstanding that we're in a smaller community in this state, but this is the only hospital system in this state that has a patient blood management program. We're one of about 200 out of the 5,000 hospitals in this country. So it really speaks to the far sightedness of the board, the administrators, the medical staff, to realize this is a very good thing, to take good care of your liquid organ along with your other organs. And so we'd invite you to come by the east campus on November 4th or 5th, right in the lobby there. We'll have a booth and we can talk to you about things you can do to help your blood health. Or if you want to come to the one in Prescott there on Willow Creek Wednesday, the, that would be the 6th through the 8th, we'll be there too. And we can just share some things that you can do proactively to take better care of your blood health, which is so important. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you for that. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Would any member like to pull anything from consent? Councilman Good?
Mayor, yes, I'd like to pull item seven D.
Okay. Regarding Yavapai Family Advocacy Center, got it. Anything else? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, move to approve consent items A through H, removing item D.
Second. Second of a motion, second, please vote.
Passes six zero.
All right, let's look at item seven D.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Debbie Black, Police Chief. This item is to request approval for, to enter into an agreement with Yavapai Family Advocacy Center in the amount of $32,617 for the fiscal year 2020. This is budgeted and we anticipated this amount. And I believe one of the questions is surrounding the increase in the amount needed for this service. Just very briefly, WIFAC provides supportive services for criminal investigations, particularly around the crimes against women and against children. They also are responsible for providing our sexual assault exams for victims of sexual assaults, as well as victim advocacy services regionally, which includes members of our community. The Director of WIFAC is here to answer any specific questions you have, or I'd be happy to address anything you have concerns about.
Thank you, Chief. I certainly am not objecting to the value of these services. But looking at the original memorandum of understanding, we're about halfway through a five-year agreement. In the first three years, the city was providing $9,900 a year, flat rate. And last year it increased 60% to $15,937. And now we're seeing over 100% increase this year to $32,617. Those are pretty dramatic escalating costs. So if this was budgeted for fiscal year eight, 20, that we voted on and approved, why are we seeing this dramatic additional request for funding?
Okay, Mayor, Councilmember Good, I can speak somewhat to that, but I'd like to turn it over to the Executive Director of WIFAC for specific details. Part of the reason for this is WIFAC was receiving significant funding through RICO, through the PANT, the Narcotics Task Force, and that RICO funding availability has decreased significantly. So I think that is primarily the cause of the increase of the funding, but I would, with your approval.
Yeah, go ahead.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for having me. The initial increase last year was due to the fact that the Advocacy Center opened its doors in 2000, or a project of Prevent Child Abuse Arizona. And there had been no increase in, over those 18 years until last year, but there had been almost a 300% increase in the amount of victims that we had served. So to, to match that increase in victims served, we looked at increasing the cents per citizen from 25 cents per citizen to 40 cents per citizen. And we changed it from the 2,000 census to the 2,015 census. So that was that initial increase up to the 16,000 around there. And then as Chief Black just explained, since our doors opened in 2000, we also received annual funding from PANT or RICO funding through PANT. And over the last about 18 months, we have been in meetings with Sheila Polk, and she's been explaining to us that, that that, that funding is significantly decreasing due to a decrease in the, in the seizure of those, of those funds, because everything is shifting to Bitcoin and internet money, and it's not cash that they can seize. So it's not money that we can use to put back into the community for victims. Through that process, we had several meetings with her and Sheriff Masher, and then brought the, asked, hosted the entire PANT board meeting to have all the chiefs at our, out to our center. That was earlier this year, I believe, so that we could talk about ways to compensate for that funding that we were losing, so we didn't lose the services that we provide to the victims. In 2018, we provided service to, services to 887 victims throughout Yavapai County. Our services include victim advocacy, which is crisis intervention and support. It is, we run support groups for victims of domestic violence and sexual assault, parents of children who have gone through abuse. We provide trauma-informed therapy. We provide all the sexual assault exams for the county, which include strangulation exams and severe physical abuse exams. We provide forensic interviews, which are best practice in talking to children, so they're not interviewed in police stations. Detectives are able to sit and watch the interview and monitor it and really gather the information they need while a trained forensic interviewer is conducting that interview. We provide legal services, so we have an attorney that provides support to victims who are trying to leave their abuser or gain custody of their children from somebody who's been abusive. All of these services are free of charge to our victims. And then the other piece of what we do is we support and coordinate the multidisciplinary team and the sexual assault response teams for the county, which is comprised of the county attorney's office, each of the law enforcement agencies, victim advocates, medical personnel, therapeutic people, our counselors. And so we meet every two weeks to review our cases, make sure we're getting the correct information that the county attorney needs to move forward, and that we're all being accountable and, and providing the best support and services to the victims that we can. Ironically, the Prescott Police Department has brought five cases, including the one that was in the paper today, through our center in the last five days. That's not typical of them. We don't quite usually see that volume, but we are, we're available 24/7, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year.
Well, thank you for that description of your services. And as I said before, I have no objection at all. I mean, I think those are extremely valuable and understand the need for forensic collection of evidence to support prosecution and, and charges, et cetera. You know, that's all something that has been provided for quite a number of years by the Advocacy Center. Your statement that you were able to absorb a 300% increase in, in victims contacted over the past, since 2000, without increasing the fees to the city is laudable. But to come forward and say, "We want a 220% increase in funding without any actual financial statements or support," that would translate into a 60% cut in funding just from last year. So was that, 60% of your funding was coming through Matforce, which was coming through RICO Caesar's?
No. Our, our annual budget is $640,000. We receive federal grants, state grants, private grants, in combination with the money that comes from all of the local towns and jurisdictions in the county.
So your grant funding is relatively stable and you're still getting grant funding at the level that you had in the past?
Absolutely. And we, we reapply for the federal VOCA grant every three years, and that is the primary source of funding.
Every jurisdiction that you service is getting hit with a, over 100% increase in requests for funding?
Yes, we raised the increase to 76 cents per citizen across the county.
Well, you know, my math is relatively good, but that just doesn't, doesn't seem to, to add up. If, if your grant funding is stable, you're not providing additional services, and your funding has been cut by 60% somewhere that all the jurisdictions have to compensate for, then where's the missing number?
We were receiving $125,000 a year annually from RICO.
That's 20%.
And we were receiving about $50,000, $50,000 a year from the joint towns and, and the county. So the 76 cents per citizen is now to make up for that $125,000 that we've lost from PANT. So it is to, we're hoping to have the county throughout each of the cities and towns support us for that $175,000, since we cannot count on RICO for that funding.
Well, I'd like to see that type of financial justification submitted along with your request, because all we have is just a request.
I'd be happy to provide our annual budget or anything else that would be requested.
Well, I mean, you're asking me to spend taxpayer dollars without the backup to justify it, other than, you know, just the statements here. So without that, I don't think I can, I can support this increase.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you. You know, times are so different today in our communities, and I've been working with Arizona Town Hall on our initiative this year as strong families, thriving children, and I know that the Family Advocacy Center participated. And just appreciate all that you do for this, because it's, if we were to do this individually as a city, how much that would cost us, and it would not nearly be as effective, because you are really professionals at what you do. And just appreciate that 24/7 call and, and the fact that we've had to defer five cases to you. Is that something? So thank you for what you do in our community, and I'm sure a lot of communities wish that they had such a group to be able to turn to. I just want to thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you for standing in this gap. It's very, very important work. I appreciate what you do. I'll make a motion to approve item seven D.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
Passes five one.
All right, thank you. Let's move on to item eight A, please.
Approval of the final plat of phases one through three of Deepwell Ranch, 1.46 Westwood.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for a final plat for a portion of Westwood subdivision. I'll give you a little bit. Thank you, sorry. I'm being picky. The aspect ratio is all off. It made Westwood look really fat. There we go. So just to give you an idea of the location, thank you. It is just west of Antelope Crossings, also just west of the airport. It is a new subdivision. It is the first one that started through and under the Deepwell Ranch master plan, as you recall, was enacted a couple of years ago. City Council approved a preliminary plat sometime back, which included a whole series of phases. And as a result of the design criteria associated with typical plats, this one is proposing to final plat just this portion. So it's the south half, more or less, slightly more of the project. And in total, 104 lots. And the intent is to final plat it, start building out the phases with infrastructure and lots, and then ultimately come back and final plat the remainder of the lots in a second plating process. We gave you some information in the staff report about the overall design of the subdivision, the conformance with preliminary plat. And one issue came up that we wanted to point out to you and is a particular concern, specifically in relation to the motion, the recommended motion we gave you. And that is, if you look at the street layout of just the southern portion of this, the piece before you today, to have two ways in and out requires that roadway be dedicated as a public road, public street. At this point, it has not been, although a submittal has been made, was submitted Friday to our Public Works Department for review to dedicate that street to the public, so that in fact, this phase of the subdivision would have two points of entry and exit for safety, fire reasons, a number of other reasons, traffic circulation reasons. In the staff report, we made a recommendation from our review, from planning side of review, to condition the approval of the final plat on that dedication occurring prior to recordation, or excuse me, prior to vertical construction of any of the homes in, in the plat, in order to let the project proceed forward while this dedication occurs. While there are technical intricacies associated with it, the process for dedicating a street right of way is relatively straightforward. So we would anticipate this is something that could happen fairly easily. Matter of designing the street to meet city standards, Public Works Department makes a recommendation, you would see before you approval of a map of dedication. We believe that's now in the works with the submittal that we got on Friday. And the condition, we originally placed a vertical construction seems to be perhaps a little overkill, but it does give a trigger that requires that dedication before they start building houses. Again, we're looking at life safety, specifically fire safety and access to and from the subdivision, not just for residents, but for also construction workers and our fire crews. The Public Works Department have certain criteria for the design of the street, and the original submittal to them did not meet those criteria exactly. They resubmitted something that I've been advised does meet those criteria. They have yet to be reviewed by Public Works, but we anticipate that happening. So with that, it's a relatively straightforward process. Today is final plat for that portion. We will be back to you again with the northern portion for another final plat at some point in the future. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer on the staff side, and we do have representatives here from Doran Homes, who are the subdividers of this property.
Okay, thank you, George. Questions, comments from the council?
I just have one. Just out of curiosity, because I can't remember the numbers, Saddlewood has how many lots in that development?
I believe 173.
Okay. So when this one here is at its total buildout, how many total lots will this be?
It will be 183.
Okay. And when it's totally built out, you're going to have three ingress, egresses?
That's correct. With the southernmost one, it will be a signalized intersection.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mayor. So George, the Bicycle Pedestrian Traffic Committee, we have made some recommendations about multi-use paths here within the Deepwell Ranch. Can that be seen within any of what's going on here?
I do not believe there are any multi-use paths shown on the plat that we have before us today.
Connections to trail or?
There are many connections to trail system, internal connections, and also several connections to the exterior major trails in the area.
Okay.
At this point, that isn't reflected on the plat before you, but those are things that are often created in easements as development occurs.
So it's something that's still on the radar?
It's still in the works, yes, ma'am.
So that we can watch that?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you.
Other questions, comments from the council? Public comment?
No, Mayor.
Entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve FNP 19-006.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
Passes six zero.
All right, let's move on to item B, please.
Approval of city contract for two-year extension with Frontburner Media for Tourism, Office Marketing and Public Relations.
Mr. Mayor and Council, we're before you today to ask for a two-year extension of an existing contract with Frontburner Media LLC. The terms of the contract will remain the same for the two-year period with a monthly retainer of $3,000 per month. This is a budgeted expense, anticipated, and I did present with you with a handout that Heather Herman, the principal of the company, put together with some metrics for you to take a look at. But just anecdotally, this summer alone, based on some of the marketing efforts that we've done, one of our measuring points with, with bed tax, use of bed tax is occupancy in our hotels. And we receive the STR, Smith Travel Research Report, monthly, and we saw for the months of the summer, from June through September, a three-point increase in the occupancy, the average occupancy year over year, from 69 to 73%. We've had weekends where our hotels are filled. They're 90, they're reporting 90%, which is in essence filled. So I think our efforts are working to invite people, especially from Phoenix metro area to come up during the summertime. And we're continuing our efforts with the Arizona's Christmas City and a lot of new advertising and marketing for that as well. So Heather is here. I don't believe there's any Tourism Advisory Committee members here at this time, but Heather could answer questions if you like.
Yeah, we'll do questions, comments from the council. Mayor Pro Tem?
John, I just want to say the Tourism Advisory Committee is just a phenomenal committee. And Heather, your input and your, you have given us such exposure internationally that I don't think we could have done had we not had your expertise. So just want to recognize that and thank you for what you do.
Councilman Good?
Yeah, I echo Mayor Pro Tem's comments. I think the marketing for tourism has been very effective. John, how much of our bed tax collections have increased over the year? John, how much of our bed tax collections have increased over the year?
So, for the last fiscal year, we eclipsed a million dollars for the first time. We've been increasing very steadily since about 2013, really between five and, we had one year where we had like a 12% increase year-over-year. It's leveling off now.
Because all the beds are full.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
We ain't got more space.
So, we need a bigger bed.
Well, we need more beds. I think we have some on the way.
That's right.
Butt beds.
Yeah, that's right.
There you go.
So, great job, and I think this is certainly justified. Thank you.
Councilman Blair?
Just a quick question for Heather, maybe. I, you know, I don't know how important it is, but to me it is, that during the dialogue that you have through all your media to advertise Prescott, how often are you suggesting that they fly into Prescott to keep the traffic off I-17, coming from other places so that we can get the fuel tax and a lot of the other things?
That's actually one of the most exciting things that we've been marketing and promoting, is the fact that we have direct flights now from LAX and Denver. And you'll notice in that report, one of the benefits of having the direct booking engine on our Visit Prescott website is the fact that we can tell where people are coming from that are booking their hotels, and in that top 10 is Denver. So, we know now that we're actually going to be launching a brand-new campaign beginning in January, where Ann and myself travel to Denver and meet in person with media, but we'll also be launching a direct-to-consumer advertising campaign there with media as well. So, it's a big piece of the puzzle, and we would hope that we would see even more increases in the direct flights from those two destinations.
I appreciate it, because you know, working at all angles helps keep that coffer full, so thank you.
Absolutely, and it also is very appealing to the visitors to avoid Phoenix and driving up that I-17 corridor. They really like the idea of the fact that they can fly into Prescott. It's still a small airport, and the fact that there's free parking, it's easy access, there's rental cars, there's Uber. It really is everything that they want in a vacation.
If they want to go to Phoenix, they can rent a car from us, where we get money from it too.
Don't tell Phoenix, but we tell them to avoid it completely, that this is the furthest south they need to travel.
There you go.
Thank you for that. Mayor Protem?
Yes, Mayor, I just really want to recognize Annie Stewart. Annie, you've been such a plus for our tourism, and you, you just travel a lot for us and all the fans that you do, and you've just brought just a real shot in the arm for us. Appreciate that so much.
I just told her today I wouldn't be here if she wasn't here.
I know, she's awesome.
Together.
Thank you.
She is a bright spot in the office, so.
She is.
Any public comment?
No, Mayor.
All right, we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, recommend to approve city contract number 2016-082A3 for a two-year extension with Frontburner Media for the marketing and public relations for the Prescott Tourism Office.
Second. Motion and second, please vote.
Passes 6-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. All right, let's move on to item C, please.
Approval of city contract for the purchase and installation of the computer-aided call handling system.
You're fine, I'll get it. Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, council, thank you. Director of Prescott Regional Communications Center, I'm seeking to approve the purchase and approval of a new call handling system. The reason for this today is the system we are currently using is 15-years-old. It's the same system that we started with when we opened the center as, as a regional center. It is, it's a card set, and that card is end-of-life. They're not going to make that any longer, and so we need to move forward with, with what's coming up in the future. What this system looks like is it's a computer-aided call handling system that is going to help with consistency, efficiency, and the safety of our public safety responders. The format as it, as it is presented to the telecommunicator is in a standardized format or a customized format, depending on, you know, what we choose to do. That is one benefit of this specific system, is that it, that it is customizable, so it can be adapted to our policies and procedures the way we see fit. It, with the consistent part, every telecommunicator will see the same format each and every time, so therefore, all the important questions can be answered by that telecommunicator from the public. So, that helps our responding units to get all the necessary information as it comes up. There are some calls that we don't do, they're very infrequent, and they're very important calls, and we want to make sure that we are asking all the important questions. So, this system will allow that. One of the other things that it provides is an integrated format, which no other company can provide. It allows the telecommunicator to be able to see all the screens at one time, so EMS, police, and fire at the same time. So, a lot of our calls can switch and escalate or de-escalate depending on the type of call. It can start out as a medical call, and extremely, situation can change to a police call. So, that telecommunicator needs to be able to switch to that as soon as possible to get that information out to the responding units. One of the other benefits of this company that no other company will provide is an assessment, it's a quality assurance program that allows the supervision to be able to go through each call that has been handled by that telecommunicator to make sure that it's handled in the proper format, and that, that way, we can make any other adjustments that we need to, to the system. Another benefit from this program is the, is, is how it can be customizable. So, when we get into the program, if we, if there's a question that is not, it doesn't fit our needs, you know, to the standard format that it comes with the, with the software, then we can actually adjust that, which other companies that we researched was not an option. Again, I just want to thank you. The, the financial impact on this is the, all, the all eight partners of Prescott Communications Center has approved this, and it will be billed back to them based off of call volume. I'm open to any questions.
Thank you for that presentation. Questions, comments from the council? Councilman Good?
Sounds great. Can you give any examples of types of calls that were difficult or delayed in being responded to that this system would be able to immediately improve?
Well, one example is when we, when we get like a, it would be, it would be a police call. We would think that, let me see, provide here a good example. So, for example, we've had, let's say, a female caller call in and state that her husband is injured. We start the EMS process, and as that process continues through the medical portion, then we find out there might be a police, a police element there, and there might be a safety issue. So, as EMS and fire are responding to that call, we need to make sure that they're safe, and so we have to stage them and allow police to go in before to secure the scene. So, by, by utilizing this system, that we will be able to get that information a lot quicker and get it to the dispatcher quicker, which in turn ends up getting to the responding units quicker. So, if we have a unit that's responding that's just down the street, which is closest unit, and they're going to be responding right in front of the house directly, that information's critical to get to them as soon as possible. So, with this system, it's going to make that a lot faster than what we're able to provide now.
Yeah, I was particularly impressed with, with the capacity for customization. I know my experience, a lot of software programs promise a whole bunch of good things, and then you find out that there are serious gaps in their performance, and you have to go back and pay a real premium to have those software designs modified to make it work. So, this is going to be a single cost, and then you can add questions, or modify questions, or delete questions, so your dispatchers will be able to be more effective in communicating and getting the speed response improved.
That's correct, and that is one of the, the benefits of that with that quality assurance program, is we'll be able to adapt that as we go, as we move forward.
Terrific, thank you.
Any other questions, comments, public comment?
No, Mayor.
Entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve contract number 2020092 in the amount of $89,246.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
Passes 6-0.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's move on to item 8D, please.
Approval of amended preliminary plat for Bradshaw Hill subdivision.
Thank you, Mayor. This probably seems familiar to you. The project's been before you a couple of times. An original plat came before you, was approved in spring of this year. Subsequently, over the summer, some changes were proposed, and we came back to Planning Commission to review those changes, and because of the number of Planning Commissioners who were at that particular meeting, failed to get a motion or recommendation for you. We came before you lacking the recommendation from the Planning Commission, and you sent us back to Planning Commission for the recommendation. So, we went back to Planning Commission with the proposed changes to the plat, and the Planning Commission made a recommendation, and I'll get into that in just a moment. Just a reminder for you and anyone who may be watching, this is the proposed property. It's zoned commercial, it's business general zoning, it's on Bradshaw Drive, just at the top of the, it's not quite the top of the hill, but mostly up the hill, past the S-curves on Bradshaw Drive. The plat that came before you and was approved contained setbacks of, I'm going to see if I can zoom in to get this clear, setbacks of 20, it's not exactly clear, 25 feet front and rear, and that one's the wrong one, sorry, 25 feet front and rear and nine feet on the sides, and that was the plat you approved as a preliminary plat. That moved forward, and again, they proposed the change. So, what came before Planning Commission was, in fact, this plat, which is proposing a change to 15 feet front and rear and seven feet on the side, which brings it into closer conformance with typical plats that are aligned somewhat like this, where you have a newer design of a subdivision that tends to have houses closer together on smaller lots. So, this is something we see a lot of in other parts of town, similar designs in other parts of town. When this plat went to the Planning Commission, it was our understanding and our presentation to the Planning Commission that only changed to the plat at that point was the setback change. Setbacks are necessary to know at an early stage, at the preliminary plat stage of a plat, in order to allow for a design of infrastructure, you have to know how much property you have and how much is available to put water, sewer, drainage, and to determine grading on property. So, the change was necessary at a preliminary plat stage, hence, we're still at preliminary plat. The change occurred in such a way that there was some confusion associated as to what was being changed. Planning Commission heard a version that reduced all the setbacks to five feet, all four sides, very unusual. They had concerns about it. The developer came back with the current proposal of 15 front and rear for setbacks and seven on the sides. They also showed some additional changes to the plat, which were not reviewed and not approved by the Planning Commission, changes to lot dimensions, changes to some of the dimensions of open space. Those minor changes occur throughout the process between preliminary and final because of the design of infrastructure, and often result in a final plat that's slightly different, but still in substantial conformance to the original approved preliminary plat. The P&amp;Z, excuse me, Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation for this particular project was to approve the change in setbacks and subject the remainder of the review to a substantial conformance review at the time of final plat. That is a very common and normal process with subdivision plats. So, what we have agendized for you today is a modification of the setbacks on the approved preliminary plat from the 25 front and rear and nine on the side that you originally approved, to 15 front and rear and seven on the sides that are proposed currently and were recommended for approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Planning and Zoning Commission voted six to one in favor of those setback changes. So, any additional changes that may occur along the way will come back to you with a final plat, and with a determination, a recommendation by staff and final determination by you, that substantial conformance to the preliminary plat has been maintained. Lot of complications. If you have any questions whatsoever, I'd be happy to answer those, and we do have a representative of the applicant.
George, what was the community input on, on these changes?
The community input varied considerably, as with many situations where there are technical steps along the way. Many of the issues that were expressed by the neighbors nearby were expressed previously and considered by the Planning Commission prior to the recommendation of the original preliminary plat that you've approved already. So, they were redesigning the entire site type of comments, which is sort of, we're past that stage in the review process now. It's not appropriate or, or practical to send the developer back at this stage and tell him to redesign the roads or redesign the lot configuration. So, many of the comments were associated with that. There were a few comments that were associated specifically with proximity of buildings to the adjacent property, specifically to the east, the Bradshaw Heights subdivision, because the potential change in setbacks would allow buildings to shift further to the back, from 25 feet away from that rear property line to now 15 feet away from that rear property line. And there were also potential changes to the dimensions of this open space area, which could also affect how close houses could be to nearby properties. So, those discussions were considered by the Planning Commission, and again, would be looked at during the substantial conformance review with a final plat by city staff and by council. So, the Planning Commission said, we accept, six to one, we accept the proposed change in the setbacks, and we're recommending, recommending those changes on to council for action. Again, any other dimensional changes or open space area changes will have to be determined later. That is current policy, process. We do that with every final plat, and rarely do you have a final plat that is exactly like the preliminary plat. There are always changes along the way, and those are addressed by council when you make a motion on the final plat. Hopefully, that was the long answer to a short question.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you. So, George, I think it's important for the public to, to know that this is a one-story housing design.
The intention is to keep the houses down to one story. The developer's rep is here and can talk to that. There is no zoning limitation that would say they have to build one-story houses. That's something that was offered by the developer.
And 54% for open space.
That's a significant amount of open space designated at this point, yes. Unusually large.
Councilman Lamerson?
Thank you, Mayor, having sat through all of those things. George, could you just share with my fellow council the one dissenting vote?
One of our commissioners has consistently, through the entire review of this project, from the very first time they saw it through the last meeting, desired to see a different type of lot layout within the subdivision, and his concerns of aligning the lots like this, which is more consistent with flatter area development, you see a lot of design like this, in fact, you saw it on the Westwood plat that you just looked at. It is something he thinks doesn't take advantage of the hillsides that already exists on the site, and his objection was tied to the fact that the design doesn't take advantage of topography like he thinks it should have.
That was, that was the point, like he thinks it should, not necessarily could. But thanks, I appreciate it.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Public comment?
No, Mayor.
Entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve amended preliminary plat of Bradshaw Hill subdivision, amending minimum setbacks.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
Passes 6-0.
All right, thank you, George. Let's move on to item 8E, please.
Approval of comprehensive sign plan for the Prescott Church of the Nazarene located at 2110 Willow Creek Road.
Thank you, good afternoon, good afternoon, Mayor and council. Tammy Dewitt, community planner. Happy to be here before you. Happy to be here before you. Subject property is located at the corner of Willow Creek Road and Pulliam Drive here. It's an existing church. Currently, the proposal is to put two signs, one at the secondary access. This is their main parking area, and to move their existing sign here up a little ways, and this is a secondary access. How do you put this up? Thank you. Okay, that's it. So currently, here is the existing sign, and here's the proposed sign location right here. They want to move it down because there's trees that block it here and is further away from the intersection to allow more visibility. This is the proposed sign. It is a digital sign on half of it, and then the other half, it's 12 feet tall and 39.6 square feet, of which 50% is electronic changeable copy. Here's the location of the proposed second sign, and this is what they're proposing on the second sign. It'd be five feet tall and 18 square feet in size. This was reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission. They did recommend approval of five to two vote at their September 26, 2019 meeting. Commissioners Rup and Michaelman voted against the request due to concerns with the size of the letters of the digital sign. Location of the monument sign near the intersection and the posted speed limit at that location. There was additional concern about business owners' adherence to the city's electronic sign policy, was afraid that they'll change the timing of the signs that don't meet code. But otherwise, it was voted recommendation of approval. There was no public comment. That concludes my presentation. I'm free to answer any questions, and the applicant is also here.
All right. Thank you for that. Questions, comments from the council? Councilman Good?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I did attend the meeting and listen to the comments, and there are some legitimate concerns there. But quite frankly, as long as the scrolling electronic digital lettering meets the standard of not too frequent change, it shouldn't really be a problem. But it comes down to, again, having diligent code enforcement making sure that those digital electronic signs meet the standard and don't exceed them, because we've got a lot of traffic on that road, and we've got enough problems with distracted drivers as it is. So this is a pretty good-sized sign. And like most signs, the business or organization is trying to attract your attention for whatever purposes they deem they want to have that sign used for. But we've got to be kind of careful, because I see more and more of these scrolling types of signs being utilized, because they're getting less and less costly to be able to provide that. And they clearly can communicate a message or attract attention more effectively than a static type of sign. So I don't have an objection to it. We just have to make sure that our code enforcement monitors it and makes sure that the problems sometimes can occur just based upon the software in the sign. Sometime, it can start moving faster than it should. I just want to make sure that we're clear we don't create a safety issue here. So I know we've got two really good code enforcement officers, and they're doing a great job, and that's why we need to keep them working as diligently as they have been. So, thank you.
Councilman Lamerson?
Thank you. I confirm with Councilman Good that as long as there's no public health or safety issue being created by the sign, the role of commissions and the council is not to design another man's sign. Our roles is to make sure the community's safe. That's our job. So I was there too, and I just, thanks for being there.
Any other comments from the council?
We just want to make sure it's not an electronic billboard.
Public comment?
No, Mayor.
Entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to recommend approval of SIG 19-003, a comprehensive sign plan for the Prescott Church of the Nazarene.
Second. Have a motion, second, please vote.
Passes 6-0.
All right. Thank you for that. Our quote is coming from Mark Twain today. He says this, "The secret of getting ahead is getting started." This meeting is adjourned.